Hey, I'm just, hey, still, guys.
So they're existing here is, or not this week, it's on the agenda. It is for a meeting next week. Any questions, concerns?
No.
Okay. That is all four on my agenda.
Yeah, eight, eight.
Exactly. Yes, so the Plating Commission made a recommendation regarding the rezoning of properties over on Whitler and Howard. I think at this point you just need to set up a public hearing.
Yeah, the origin of this is in, some requests that had come to the administration and discussing with the mayor exercised his option to refer to the Plating Commission for consideration. Possibility of rezoning some parcels upon Howard and Whitler. It is apparent by zoning map that approximately up to fifteen properties were zoned to be in the light industrial but did not include a mixed-use overlay. Some of those properties, almost all of them are residential, and those individuals, at least one, is in the process of trying to sell their home. And they're unable to secure a deal because A, have, if I can't sell it as a residence because it's in a light industrial, doesn't have a mixed-use overlay. And it dumbs up the financing for these individuals because banks have to have certain covenants and certainties and guarantees that come from the building department and they can't get that. So the Plating Commission held a public hearing and came up with the solution of rezoning the parcels R2F. This is a residential classification. The lots are too small to be R50, so that's where the R2F comes in. And then to apply a mixed-use overlay on top of that. So the administration is tasked with going out, taking pictures of these properties, getting the parcel data, contacting the property owners to move this process along. But in referring it now to council from the Plating Commission, they will be looking to you to set a date for a public hearing and to follow the normal process as you would with an item coming from Plating. In the meantime, I will give the information to council so that you can bring it back into your next committee meeting and then start to look at the pictures and understand exactly what's going on.
That would be great. Looks like, ten, I'm counting out, probably like May sixth. Six weeks is April 29th, but we're not going to need that fifth of May.
Right, we'll need, is this less than a week for repository modification and add thirty days to that, so that it's sufficient. We have to give thirty days notice.
Right.
We have a classified section. No, it just takes them a couple of days, but just, just be safe. Perhaps thirty days plus a week.
Right, so I still, I think May sixth is the best time.
Yeah, May sixth.
Only do six thirty. I don't know how many people, I don't think it's going to be real exciting. Let's see, six forty-five, yeah, if it runs over, run over. Everybody okay with that?
May sixth.
May sixth, six forty-five. All right. Thank you, Pat, for your view.
All right, thank you, Portia. Next up, Faye, Martin Jever, Carol, you have something?
Yeah, before we move out of meeting increment development, I want to call everyone's attention to the materials that were prepared for the Turk. I haven't seen anything like this in, in my long history. I think this is, you've done a terrific job, the administration. If you pull on the second page, one of the things that we've struggled with is notification. There's a trans, there's a transmittal report at the very top of the document. So I think we're trying to do a better job on notifications, at least the document notifications. So Kathy, great job on this. Really, really treating this.
Kathy, along, Faye, Park?
Well, good to see you. Good to see you. But clearly it got done, and I might note that the Housing Council had just had a similar document prepared for it when it met with us. For last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Joe Moore.
Okay. So Lauren and I had talked about doing this sometime last year. We kind of said, let's put this on the radar, and so we first took the warning signs and we proactively, and then we'll talk about it, but I don't think it keeps us looking forward, so thank you.
Sure. What we have is a draft general fund balance policy. This is something that is best practice recommended by GFOA, which is the Building and Finance Officers Association. It's also a policy that debt rating agencies really like to see cities have in place. And not just, you know, an informal, something the finance director looks at day after day, but, you know, something that council has approved and that, you know, we're dedicated to following each and every year. The reason that ratings agencies like to see this is because it basically sets for a minimum fund balance that the general fund is going to keep. So that's just kind of our safety net, that if, you know, revenues would drop off suddenly, like what we had, you know, a number of years ago when Hoover left, you know, in the political recession, but that you have kind of a safety net there to, to back you up in the general fund. You know, as we know, general fund is often hooked for any fund of the city, so if any fund has trouble, general funds, they're available. The policy that I drafted, I did that by looking at best practices, like I said, from national and state groups, as well as gathering up sample policies from a lot of cities around Ohio that have these policies in place. And I want to give a special thank you to the fiscal officer over at Markham Library. She was undergoing a similar project. There's an email where we can send out, you know, please send us your policies to other governments, and she had already gathered those, so she shared them with me, so I'm thankful for that. But I went through, I had things from all around the state. I had Kent, Louisville, Charten, Dublin, just a number of cities that I looked at, and I tried to take the best parts of each. This has a lot of rationale and kind of technical stuff in it, accounting-wise, but the base policy is that the general fund year-end balance will not be less than twenty-five percent of general fund appropriations. Which what that means is we have about three months of expenses in the bank. That, you know, if Rita shut down for some unknown reason, a tornado blew away, and we didn't get income taxes for three months, we still would be okay and be able to keep paying our bills. So that's what this policy is. If anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Yes, sir.
Historically, are you aware of any situation where we've had less than a twenty-five percent balance moving into a meeting here?
We typically don't.
You don't, I'm not aware of any, but again, this is just good practice.
Yeah, this is just a minimum, you know, and, and one thing that it asks us to do is that when we do the budget for, let's say, next year for 2020, I will let you know this budget either complies with this policy or it doesn't, so we don't budget ourselves into a hole.
So if I understand this, looking at the application description on page two, essentially the finance director would be setting off a fire alarm in the last quarter if that fund balance was less than, appeared to be less than twenty-five percent.
Well, really, in any quarter, because I monitor balances every month, so if I saw it was headed that direction.
But from a reporting standpoint, there's a formal obligation to the council and the administration.
That's correct.
A shortfall could be anticipated.
Right, and there are some conditions in there where you can use the balance. You'll see those at the bottom of page two. We had a natural disaster, we had an unexpected decline, but then there are some things in the policy to say, if you use them, then you have to put a plan in place to replenish that balance.
It's essentially what we need.
Any other questions on that?
Like, a lot of, you know, it's been said that you should have, you know, three months minimum, six months is better, one year is great. That's like, you know, a planning standpoint, so, Pat, I know a lot about that. So three months is our magic number, not four, five, or six.
Right, the, the GFOA recommendation is at least two, three is better, subsidies do six, but not very many, twenty-five percent is pretty common.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So will we turn, put that on the agenda? Okay, all right. So Kathy, Lauren, how do you see this much to, with all our new park projects, we've got a lot of money going in and out, and I think with some different grants, things, we need some different policies to help us pay and request things. If you want to talk about that.
Right. Under Ohio statutory law, you're ever supposed to obtain a purchase order or a fiscal officer's certificate is the technical term for, for a purchase before, you know, obligating the city for those funds. Sometimes that doesn't happen due to errors or other oversights, so there's a provision called a then-and-now certificate. Basically, it's the fiscal officer's way of saying, we had the money then, when the purchase was obligated, we have it now, when the check is going to be cut and the bill paid. And if those are under $3,000, the finance director can do those myself, but over $3,000, I'd need the council approval to, to do that. And we had some parking classes that we didn't have a place prior to the vendor performing.
That's my head.
Okay. Okay.
Well, how much are we, we totaled, is it?
They total about $13,000.
$13,000 altogether.
Yeah, and the money was appropriated, it was in the budget, just didn't have a person or energy.
Work's been done, and you've obviously utilized it for grant opportunities, and they're planning for the future, so.
But it was just how I work and.
Just a matter of, yes.
Sorry.
The site survey.
Yeah, okay. All right, do we need to invest in the agenda as well? Yes. All right, time.
Do you need to amend the agenda?
You do, you have to, item C.
Item C.
Council relocation.
I have everything in front of you here. That is, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we talked about that earlier today.
Yeah, I had to, all right, so I have plenty of motion.
I wrote that we amend the agenda to include item C for financing property, discussion of expenditure funds for the relocation of the council chamber two, the six.
For the second.
On second.
All favored.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Kathy.
Yes, thank you, and I want to just also explain that with this arrangement that we have here on Howard, all administration trying to make sure that we do everything to ensure that items get to council in a time of may or we were very respective of the, of the Tuesday recommended cutoff for items to make it to the agenda. That's a practice that I would like to say that I put in place back when we were on council together, was something that we tried to get the administration to do, is to turn things in early, so I'm all for that. In this particular case, we were working on a project, and I was away on vacation and a lot of it was coming together late, and when I got back, we, on Thursday, had missed the Tuesday cutoff. So it's an important project for council, is what we have been talking about for so much time, getting the council office into the civic center, you know, and down there lately, new floor, new paint, new lighting. It's a, it'd be a great place for meetings. We need to get the council hardware down there, the audio visual, this stuff here, where we're having difficulties all the time with getting stuff to livestream and whatnot, old and, and quick, but we need to kind of move that, that all forward. Putting the DAS in place, and then from there, once that's done, and we're able to vacate here, we would hope to have this project completed so that when you come back from your summer break, we'll be meeting down at the civic center. And then we'll move the engineering offices up here, and it's important to management, I understand this is expenditure funds here, but it's important to management that all of that personnel is under one roof, because with that, we have a better understanding of what's happening in each department. There's cost synergies and we can maximize the available staff, that, you know, we don't need to have a lot of extra clerks to do some things, because we have some administrators that have been helping. So to make all that happen, Kathy Farina will be working with Brian Hill and with AppNet, our IT vendor, and a number of contractors to come up with some ballpark, pretty good ballpark numbers on what it would take to make this happen. And so we'll pass that out to you tonight in the form of a handout that's in front of your DAS. And the, as you can see, the breakdown on there, we kind of moved it, broke it out between the engineering department and the council, which you can see the difference between the two. The grant totals moved all this around as approximately $123,000.
How much again, I've been here.
$143,000, approximately.
Do you believe you'll save money by consolidating everybody under one roof in the long run, both that say, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, I, I do believe that we will, there will be cost synergies on, on employees. I know some of these folks reach, you know, retirement age, or they were to leave, find other opportunities. By having everyone here, we can reassign those responsibilities and keep it in-house without hiring anybody else. So yes, I, I wouldn't have, we wouldn't be proposing it if I didn't think that it was benefiting the city financially in the short term and the long term.
I think another aspect of that is the ability to have further space in the facility and the ability to offer as rentals is expanded in that nation.
Thank you for that friendly reminder. Yes, we have been talking about that, those spaces that wouldn't vacate, those are nice-sized meeting rooms, that people are looking to take advantage of to rent, you know, we really have, we don't have that now. We have, maybe come up here and rent the conference room, that's not the only room that we have, other than you'd have to go rent a pavilion, and that's not what people are really looking for. So it's a great place to have meetings. From civic organizations, we had one here a couple of weeks ago, we're working with a new group to bring a new event to the city, and they knew the meeting space.
We can, we can try to DAS at the civic center, obviously it will be taken down and put back out soon.
Yes, a great question. We had done the schematics down there, the tables and chairs that are being rented. One of the offices of the previous chief building official will now serve as the place to store the tables and chairs. Therefore, the DAS would be stored in that room, that's the room right behind the projection screen, double doors are. So we literally just open those up, wheel these right out, drop them in place, configure them in any number of different ways we'd like. Something similar to this, or if on a committee of the whole night, we want the giant O for Ohio State, it's around that, that would work too.
Oh, yeah.
I think you also mentioned, we would be able to incorporate all the electronics at the DAS, so that we wouldn't need someone perhaps to, to start recording and so forth. And problems that we have had with projecting, we had two screens or just projecting here, we found perhaps one of the causes, but what we were going to have, I believe in the plans is a hard one. We're not going to have to worry about losing a connection and having to reboot and the delay that we would have during the council meetings with a hard fire, it'd be just like it was your computer.
Yes, that's a great point with that, the individual would, would be functioning in the, in the clerk capacity, would have the ability to not only be able to put the stuff up on a screen, by the way, the screen down there would be, be upgraded to something that's more prevalent today. And size-wise, so that you'd be able to see it from nearly the back of the civic center. But the clerk would be able to see, nobody's going to be up on the screen, if someone was to bring in a PowerPoint or something that they wanted to put up, there would be a, a delay of about seven seconds on the second screen, so that to make sure that anything that was being put up on the screen was appropriate. And it would allow the clerk to hit a kill switch if there was something that was inappropriate that was going to be put up. So all these things are available now, are being used in other communities. We would have, in the DAS format, a, a monitor that would face the council, so that the screen behind you that is seen by the audience, you wouldn't have to turn and looking this way, you could still face the audience and see the screen where you, what is that exactly?
Notice on here that, you know, the sound system and everything, which is great. One of the things we probably need to address down there is still the air conditioning unit, how much noise it makes, and how it overcomes, you know, your sound upgrades. I mean, even when we had that last meeting down there with the.
Architect.
Architects, when that came on, that's an issue, so we need to maybe take a look at that still today. I understand that we need to look at more than just, I mean, I can see there's things that we need to take care of some of the issues down there that might overcome some of our nice little sound.
The stuff that you have down there is not commercial-grade sound equipment, it doesn't meet the test. The stuff that we've been demoing down there, you know, we could own a rock concert if we wanted. So the stuff that you're getting overcomes all that, and we've been able to test some of that out already. We've also, you know, made some upgrades and repairs to the HBA system down there that's quietened down. It's better than when it was when we had the EPA meeting, but I think when you get the new sound system in there, you, you will see how that completely overcomes that. But that is, that is something that we've been, engineering group, it's very giddy.
Yeah, I know. And that could be another issue. We have people hearing us here, but.
What would be an issue there?
We truly don't need that.
Yes, I can add some tech to it. There's going to be a DSP, which is a digital sound processor, the signal processor, that's going to be added in. There's some really high-tech stuff also. There will be a surge elimination, you know, to provide, you know, more protection to the rachamalia equipment that we didn't have before. And something called an ALS system, that's for anyone ADA compliant, it's assistive listening system. Anyone hearing impaired, they can adjust a hearing aid to the system so that the frequency will help them to be able to manage all the background noise. So there's some, I can give you like more information based on what's included in the technical book, down to the specs of everything. So it's really upgrade all of this, making it much more streamlined, like Tim mentioned, be able to operate from a one single iPad and just improving the quality overall of everything that we have.
Just, just another quick information, I think we'll be the ones setting that up for council and tearing it down.
It'll be our step.
Okay, I mean, if they want to get down there and all of a sudden our clerk who we do not have has to set up something there and redo it, we need to make sure that everything is set when it's set. It's just a communication thing, I'm sure you'll be able to cover that.
We know the meetings are on Monday nights. They won't be set up.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I address the streaming question that we had here in public speech, since we're talking about technology? I still do not know why last week's meeting didn't stream. One thing I can tell is that the software that we use, it's called Wirecast, has had some kind of an update. Unfortunately, I am not familiar with the update, so I don't know how to change the settings. I worked on it for about an hour this afternoon, finally got it to go. I did a test stream, it went on on YouTube, I watched it on my phone, had it all set up, ready to go, just looked on my phone for this meeting, it is not streaming again. So we are still having the office of this equipment, it's very touchy, and one of the things I found out when I was in here this afternoon, you know, sometimes we get that really lot of feedback in the speakers and microphones. We were having that today. I turned the volume up and down, it's the only solution that we typically have, is just to turn the volume down. I was going around checking to see if any of the mics were not on, and when I did that, I stepped on that wire right in front of my desk, feedback went away. So the point of this story is to say, what is in this room is kind of cobbled together, and it is not functioning as it should.
In last week's meeting, one of the four screens that you have there at the clerk's desk, one of those is telling you it's streaming, it's streaming right now. And what you need to do is to assure that is to sit on your phone and to monitor it and watch it, as the clerk for last week's meeting, it shows that, you know, the most important thing that I could do was follow along to make sure that we hid all the things that we needed to as a council, and not on my phone whether or not it's streaming, it's telling me it's streaming. We finished, we saved it, and it's not there. So it is a technological anomaly. It did nothing different than it did previous week where everything was acting just as it was there, meeting's there. One of the things was that a bit of a disconnect between YouTube and the software that we were using, where YouTube wouldn't allow us to use that non-proprietary software to name and date meeting. So it gave it the same date that we had used the, the last one, and the frustration was, wait a minute, that's two weeks ago. Started to play it and knows, just had given it the same title, working with Director of Finance, very tech savvy, she was able to figure out the change in the policy with YouTube not accepting the non-proprietary software. She was able to go in and give it its proper date, but that's a bit of a frustration, is the technology that we have right now tells us, hey, everything's working fine. And when you attempt to utilize it to go out and watch it later, you find out it actually wasn't.
Question, so if you can't stream it live, if you have technical difficulty, still being recorded, right? So you could always post it, but what I'm saying is that if it's not streaming live, I mean, there should be a way that it's still recording where you can post it.
Well, we, we have an audio that has been, actually, although it has been finicky, it's been tried and true. Once we went through the process, we learned now it works, it records by station, and so when we have to back up, we had a situation where a court reporter was disturbed during the meeting. And this is our digital recording backup. We can hear and recognize from the names, and we can actually produce it to the channel. If we were unsure of which person it is, we can know it came from this spot or this spot. It's working right now.
Carol.
I think it'd be interesting to know how much money we've spent on tech.
Cam here.
I'd be interested to know how much money we've spent on technology and improving the acoustics in this room over the last 20 years, if it were a current problem. But, you know, while we're all enthralled with technology, I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the real reason we moved it down to the civic center is to provide the administration with management authority. Consolidation for personnel, keep personnel in one location for reasons of better management. At the end of the day, that contributes to better outcomes for our residents. My line.
Mayor?
If I could just, I wanted to comment just a couple of things. First off, I think that it's a great idea that the council's going to move their chambers down to the civic center. We, you know, obviously, companies have heard that decision, because as Councilman Holt stated, that it will allow the city employees to come together, and it just, it just brings better synergy and a better working relationship, both for the employees and then also the supervisors. And, you know, down at the solid waste district where I met during the day, you know, we have monthly meetings, and we hold them with folding tables, and electronic equipment goes without a hitch. We put, you know, nice tablecloths over it, done it for years, a nice professional setting, but it does allow flexibility so that you can conduct other meetings in that same room. So I think that's a good, a really good move. The other thing is, you know, with the, with our finance director serving as the council clerk, I think it's a great idea that council did that, because obviously we had a clerk that serves under the, the appointment of city council that had retired, and that left a vacancy, so then we had the law director, the finance director, that were. vacancy, so then we had the law director, the Finance Director, that were, you know, attempting to keep this, you know, keep it moving even though there was a short period of time. But when you look at the charter, council does have the authority to appoint or counsel, they just can't be an elected official, but they can be an appointed official for the city. And then if you also look at the charter too, and this is really, everything that our Finance Director is doing is right according to the charter. So it's under 3.5, and I know council members are all aware of this, I'm just offering support for the decision that you made, because I thought it was a great idea, that the Director of Finance or their deputy may serve as the clerk of council. And as far as the responsibility, it lies with the person who signs off on the meeting minutes. And so when you look at the duties that the Director of Finance does, she's responsible for every single penny that is spent in the city, in every single department, whether it's safety or service, and to keep track of all those records. And I will say that she's had a perfect audit with the state of Ohio. So, and not to mention with her previous experience, she's read hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of meeting minutes. Because when she would go in and audit municipalities, or villages or townships, or school boards, she would have to read through the meeting minutes in order to do the audits. So it's in accordance with the charter, which the Finance Director says under 3.5, that the clerk may hold any other municipal point of office, pardon, no, it's not 3.5, it talks about the Director of Finance or identity may serve as clerk for meetings of administrative divisions or for the other divisions requested by council. So council asked her to do it, she's not getting any more money. Really what it is, is she's just increased her responsibility, really doubled it. Because it doesn't really matter what takes place, she's the one who's signing off on it, she's the one who has the responsibility, so I appreciate it, and I know council does, and I'm speaking on council's behalf, we appreciate the fact that we're doing that. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that. So thank you.
Well said there.
Okay, so we want to move this to next week's agenda. Have so many times of the essence you want.
We won't have enough.
We won't have enough next week. That's on emergency, but we could do a reading of the following week if you guys want to, next week if you can schedule a.
We'll be at Walsh University. If you'll reschedule.
That's committee.
Committee of the whole.
Yeah. We could schedule a, we already have a committee meeting for April 1st. We could do a quick special council meeting for a second reading of this with an emergency clause. Does that work for you? Does that work for council?
Let us make a motion that for we hold a special council meeting Monday, April 1st.
Correct.
At Walsh University for consideration of one item, and that would be to appropriate or to transfer funds for the relocation of the council chamber to the Civic Center.
Immediately following the taking, the TRCs and CRA's before the end of the month.
And they then announce on emergency as well, when you need that bill paid.
Okay.
So that's not the end of the month?
And that to a cologne.
Hold on, April 1st is the beginning of the next month. Who's saying we need the TRC down by the end of the month?
Yeah, I understand that we don't set the date for the TRC meeting, that is set by the county commissioners, and that they set that for today, and, you know, I was lucky to be able to give it on the agenda for tonight, let alone have it done by April 1st.
So we should have a meeting this week or then?
It's got to be this week. It's got to be this week. There's a delay on Saturday. There's a delay on Saturday, Friday. Friday, feeling Friday.
Friday.
Evening.
My motion is failed for one.
Hold on, hold on.
Got that anyway. Yeah. Still have discussion about it.
Okay.
So it's a great motion.
A great motion.
What's that, what can they do this week?
I can, I can.
Do Wednesday or Thursday?
I can do Wednesday. I can do Thursday night, I cannot do Wednesday. Can't do Wednesday night.
I can do Thursday.
I'd say early 1:00 p.m., so I'm good on your day.
About Thursday. Does anyone have any conflict on Thursday?
What time?
Early gets there on Thursday.
Cameron here, 5:00, Doug? What do you say about a special council meeting? Special council meeting? What's going to be on the agenda?
Let's see, there are amounts. TRC, CRA agreements.
And first four items on community economic development tonight, so those.
I'm open.
Now and then, and then and now, and then and now.
Yeah.
And the relocation.
And a relocation. Well, we have that public speaks on this one, make sure that's.
Let me, let me make a motion. That would be on Thursday night at 5:00 p.m. for the consideration of the following items. Under community economic development, item A, B, C, and D. Those are respectively CRA agreements for Harmon Street, CRA for North Main, CRA for LND, and CRA for Insight Realty. We would also like to consider under finance and property, three items. First, A is the establishment of a general fund balance policy. Item B is the establishment on emergency of then and now, certificate for our expansion expenses. And the third is the authorization to transfer funds to support the relocation of the council meetings to the Civic Center, again, under emergency.
Can you read that date that you were?
And that would be Thursday, March 21st.
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
No secondment? All favor.
Aye.
And I am opposed. Motion carries. Special council meeting next Thursday, or this coming Thursday, 5:00 p.m. Okay. Very good. All right, so at this time, I need a motion in a second. You had mentioned before that, a special meeting on April 1st.
And then it went anywhere that way.
But you won't need that now.
That's correct, I died for lack.
Yes, okay. Very good.
It's a weak. It's a weak motion.
Pretty sure. Okay, so we're good then. All right, at this time, I need a motion in a second to enter into executive session concerning disputes involving cities that are subject of imminent action. Before I have that motion in a second, there's students in the audience, if you guys need anything signed, assume you can make this motion, come on up, assign it, and then we're going back into executive session. So is there a motion in a second?
I have a motion in second.
All favor.
Aye.
We'll call. I need a roll call. I need a roll call. Laura, we call, no place.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Keesling?
Yes.
Bolt?
Yes.
Serrano?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
And Peters.
Yes.
Okay, we already make a session. Anybody need anything signed?
I will not be making that.
Yeah, you guys.
Are we good? All for education.
I think that's one of them. Oh, you're, are you, about half the year? No, you're not. Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my gosh, she's so, oh my God. Not Griffin, the board brother to Jack. Yeah, but I can see Griffin too. I just find it. I'll have that for, but yes.
Signature, right?
Oh my God. Nice. 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 Yeah, but I can see Griffin too. I just find it. I'll have that for, but yes.
Signature, right?
Oh my God. Nice. 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 Joe, make sure your mom gets that.
What? She told me all about it.
It's definitely something. I promised your dad. I can research this.
Oh wait, what'd he say?
There's teachers. I know that question.
Yeah. Okay, I got it. That's the one. Okay.
Teacher, go over there.
Yeah. Yeah. Mrs. Morrison. Oh man, I'm going to tell Mrs. Morrison about that. We come back to the text session before I do, because we have a special. So we're just going to forego, back to my reason, because we only have one item on there. We can't talk about anything else other than what the motion.
No, on Monday.
They can in public speaks. Or some kind of.
We did, we didn't have a special. Are we going in or not?
Yes.
Yes, we're going in?
Yep.
Let's go. This beauty, five minutes. So we'll see if Mark have a great time, our release, now I can hear. I have work down there.
Are we allowed to leave?
Yeah, see you Thursday.
Hey, guys. Hey, Don, run a demonstration, we come out on Thursday.
I thought they had a session, where they all go with it?
We can't be in the executive session.
Huh?
We cannot be in the executive session.
You're Serrano and Fonte?
Must have to do with health, medical.
No, I'm not sure.
Your medical, not your medical, Serrano's medical.
No, no, I know, not the medical.
Well, it's been drinking, Martha.
If I have to go.